Our meeting together at the order. Uh, I have just about six o'clock. Uh, we do have a quorum, we got four members here tonight. Uh, the first thing we'll do under Article One is the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, whole, liberty, and justice for all. Welcome everyone tonight. We will go, uh, just to let you guys know, uh, Article Ten will not be considered tonight because that was already done. Had to pass the board meeting, so take Article Ten off your. Okay? Okay, let's go to Article Two, Public Participation. Is there anyone here tonight for public participation? Paul, go ahead.
Okay, the only thing I just wanna try to mention, I know, I, I've been out, I've been going through town, I see certain roads, uh, are kinda slippery and slushy. Try to get up the hill with the forward focus there. So sometimes I have to go all the way around to get, get through where I'm going there on revenue, so I take sort of London Avenue, walk the, uh, Front Street and go that way and go down the hill, so that way I won't get stuck going up the hill there. You know, it's pretty hard with the small focus two thousand and thirteen going up the hills. So that's why, I'm hoping in the near future, if you can, if you can't do it now, but try to save the day and put the piles on twelve hours shift probably in the near future, near future, later on.
Thank you, Paul. Anything else? Mr. Daigle, Dan.
Outside of the political arena, I think, uh, it'd be worthy to, uh, commend our town manager for his heroic effort the other day to stop at a crash scene. Uh, he probably doesn't see himself as a hero, but I'm sure if you talk to the young lady that was trapped inside that car, being shaken up, fortunately she wasn't really badly or seriously hurt. But on such occasions when people do stop by, uh, in her mind, I know for a fact that our town manager Gary Peikite will remain a hero as long as she lives. And I think that was very commendable.
Thank you, Dan. I appreciate. Yeah. He doesn't necessarily, like you said, consider it anything big, but it, it was awesome. And then his wife, matter of fact. Anyone else for public participation? Seeing none, we'll move on to Article Four, to consider the treasurer's warrants. No, sorry. Article Three, to consider other business and adjustments to the agenda. Uh, we do not have any other business uh, to discuss tonight, or adjustment to the agenda, am I correct?
Correct.
Okay. Alright, now to Article Four. To consider the treasurer's warrants, they're on the table. Have you all had a chance to at least look at them?
Yes.
Then I would need a motion and a second to approve. Moved by Doug, is there a second?
Second.
Lori? Any discussion on those warrants? All in favor? Carrie? Take a little pause, are you from Channel Sixteen?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll give you a chance to get, to get set up.
Thank you.
Oh, you had already, nice, thank you, Jason. Are we good? Alright. Article Five, to consider the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes of December twelfth, two thousand nineteen. There, if you've all had a chance to read them, would there be a motion to approve them?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Lori, is there a second?
No second.
David, any permissions, corrections, anything on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. To consider a sewer abatement request for account one five eight. Gary, you gonna lead us through that one?
Yeah, you see in your, in your summary, uh, the reason for the abatement request, uh, is for, uh, this account was billed at every table of two people, and Eric should have billed for one. So they would build at a hundred eighty-five, should have been billed at a hundred and fifty. Uh, therefore the abatement request would be postponed, but I would recommend approve the abatement.
You recommend that? Is there a motion to follow the recommendation of our town manager?
I'll make that motion.
David, is there a second?
Second.
Lori, any more questions? All in favor? Carrie? Thank you. Article Seven, to consider a property tax abatement request for account twenty-six oh six. Gary?
So this, uh, this request is for an abatement, uh, the person with the account have not delivered a, uh, homestead, uh, homestead exemption application by April one. According to state law, in order to get a homestead exemption, there are some requirements that you have to meet. And one of those is you have to have your, your application by April one, if not, it affects the following year. If it doesn't go backwards, it goes forward.
But what do you mean goes forward, in other words?
It'll be for next year.
It'll be for next year?
The application should have been in by April, uh, twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen.
I did some, a lot of research on this myself because I did the same thing.
Did you really?
Yeah, we did it. Gary? We failed, we failed to put it in on time.
Yeah.
Now, the person with the, the request is here, she probably shouldn't want to speak.
Okay. I did the research on that, um, the twelve months starts when you do the transfer on buying a home. Okay? That's not my job. Okay? I paid to have all my paperwork done, everything. The water went, the electrical, uh, the, uh, water, the stores went through. I had extra taxes paid over from the previous owner. That kicked in. Uh, you sent me a bill last year and I had a hundred and nine dollars. That was credit, nobody was able to explain to me what that hundred and nine dollars is. Uh, I came in and had quotes done from Dina, okay, for the, um, homestead, okay? Prior to that. So if you count from October, I bought the home in October seventeen. I bought, October seventeen, it was my house. If you start from there and you go all the way to April, that's six months. That would have brought me into two thousand eighteen. Okay, from April to that year to the other April, that's my twelve months. Okay? Which would leave me three months from two thousand eighteen that you owe me on my homestead, plus the two thousand nineteen. Okay? The applications were all submitted, they were all signed. I was told by four clerks in this place, okay, that I'm all set. Everything will automatically come in, in fifteen months. Now I'm supposed to wait another twelve months, which would equal to twenty-seven months. For a homestead, that I'm entitled to have, I'm low income, I earn very little money a year. Okay? I don't need help to pay my taxes. I want my money from my homestead. Okay? When I moved in October of two thousand, um, two thousand seventeen, you sent me a form on operating a business at home. I didn't have time to lay my freaking suitcase down. You already knew everything about me. Okay? Why did not my homestead kick over? You, you had all the information, okay, all signed and sealed.
Responsible.
Okay? It's simple.
Arlie, the responsibility?
Then I want the article on the bottom, okay, I wanted appeal, okay? You gave me a form for an abatement, which I was told to be an abatement for my homestead. Okay? You gave me a form for something that I cannot pay my taxes. I don't have a problem paying my taxes.
When you came to me last Friday, you asked for a poverty abatement application, and I provided you one.
I asked for my homestead, okay? Yes, I did.
Arlie? Arlie, when you came to see me last week, you asked me for a poverty abatement application. And I, and I gave you one.
For my homestead? An abatement for my homestead, why would I go for property? Why?
Arlie, you asked me for a poverty abatement application, and that's what I provided you.
Whatever, okay, you didn't know where to get them.
Arlie?
In two thousand seventeen, you didn't even have a tax assessor.
Arlie?
Whose job was it to submit my, my application?
It's your job to submit your company application?
I did?
No, there's nobody here that has any records of that.
Alright, okay. Back in two thousand nineteen eighty, I graduated, okay? I had what you caused for me in the last month. Okay, that's, uh, has been following me all along. I have a fourth grade reading level. Okay? I was pushed out of our school system. Okay? Came here because I wanted to graduate, I wanted a business in the town of Matawaska. You had me pulled three times! Do you remember picking me up at four o'clock in the morning a few times? Within ten years?
No.
No? You don't.
Okay, yeah, are we on the abatement right now?
It doesn't matter. The abatement is for homestead, it's not for property tax, it's not, I don't give a who, who. First of all, Lori.
Can I?
Are you a secretary?
No, I'm a selectman.
You're a selectman, okay.
Well, anyway. Can I, can I say something?
Yes, go ahead, Lori, you get the floor.
Yeah. I, listen, wait, if you want, I'll research again, okay? But the homestead exemption is a state.
That's right, and I qualify for it, everything is done.
Yes, but the application part, the, the application, the app-
The fairness tax is done.
Arlie, Arlie, please litter, litter.
Please, please let me finish. The application to apply for the homestead exemption is the taxpayer's responsibility, okay? It's not the town that is responsible for sending you the application or filling it in for you.
Okay. So I'm in here, Lori, I'm in here last week.
And I'm telling you this from personal experience because I didn't get mine either, and it's not pretty at my house right now because it's costing us more money because we didn't fill it out.
Whatever, Lori. I came in here last week with a form. It's, I did not ask Gary to help me fill this out.
Yeah, it, it's too late. It's, it's too late, it was due in April.
Okay? Look, I have one that's copied, says copied, for two years ago. Is this one good for next year, April, or is it not?
Is, is that, that's, is that a copy that we have, or?
Has this been submitted? No? Okay, why is my other one have not been submitted two years ago? Dina, you just sent this, it's weird.
Is that information new, Gregor, did you have that?
What's the date on the bottom of that document?
Okay, this has just been done, okay?
What's the date on the bottom right hand?
You see, December sixth, two thousand nineteen.
Right, okay, yeah. We have a copy of that here.
Right, December sixth, two thousand nineteen.
Okay, where's my other one?
That's after, that's after April one.
Where was my other one that I left with eight, with, uh, you and, uh, there was three clerks in here, there was four of you in here. I had you come out of here and give me all the quotes, I have all the quotes that you gave me here. Okay, everything is written, budget, house budget. Okay, I had it all in order, I came here specified, so you guys could give me a guide to work on. Okay? You were pretty close on the guide, okay? Why is it I didn't get mine? No homestead, homestead. I didn't get it. It's simple, you sign.
Okay, let's, uh, let's call a quick timeout. Okay, I do not want, because this is a board, we're the board, you're here talking to the board. Let's have this conversation to the board.
Yes. To the board, let's do it.
Okay? Well, we just had, uh, I think your explanation was given, it had to be done by April first, and it was not.
Two years ago.
Well.
When you transfer your houses, okay?
You could have, you could have done it by April first of this year, and you would have got the homestead exemption on the tax bill that you just received in the mail.
For this year.
Lori, I did it two years ago, okay? I was told it'll automatically come in. Natalie, I came in again, right Natalie? I made you sign a paper saying, okay?
Please direct your conversation to the board.
No, to the board.
To the board, not to Natalie.
To the board. Okay, but anyway, okay, to the board.
To the board. Okay?
Alright, I come in here two weeks ago, okay, and I ask her, is this one that I had stand for this year, is this gonna be good, is this gonna work? Okay, do I need to fill another one? I don't have time, because I have Mr. Dubois pulling me out. Okay?
And why was Mr. Dubois pulling you out?
Why? Because you can't take the heat, I guess, I come in here and I say, Gary, it's been a gift.
No, why?
Okay, well.
Why? Because we're not gonna, we don't have to sit here and accept vulgar language and them bombs dropped every time you walk into this building.
Really?
And you were warned of that the last time you were here, and you came back and you did the same thing again.
It's your responsibility to put those taxes, those files in there.
No. It's your responsibility to file a timely application.
Gary, if I blow around and then ask you.
Alright, let's, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna put a, a, a closer, we understand the situation you're in, really, we do know, okay?
Okay, so.
Let me.
Can, can I ask a question of, alright, is there anything legal, since this application was not put in on time, that can be done to correct this?
No.
I didn't think so because I tried.
You looked at it and you tried for your, for yourself, too, at the same time you got all the information.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's, it's basically saying that I'm sorry.
It's right, it says it in the application.
But I have all this against me, and I'm sorry. It's a, it's a stated main thing, it isn't the time issue.
I have all my paperwork, everything is there, everything was done.
Now, the application that she's, she has, that she's talking about, will kick in next, uh, next year's taxes.
Yes.
Okay, we're talking about this year's tax bill that went out. That application was not done in a timely manner.
Right.
So at this point, we don't have any other recourse but to deny it.
Correct.
Okay. To deny it, we would need a motion and a second if we're gonna do that.
Well, if you deny it, all this information is going to state, okay? It's going state next week, I don't have a choice. I'm in a process of doing something, and it's gonna go state.
That's, I mean, that's okay, if you feel like that's your only recourse, I mean, it's what you have to do.
Okay, because it, it's not like, like it's costing the town anything. It's the town that did not do the job. Okay, and I'm losing out as... How long have I been trying to open a hair salon in the town of Matawaska? For a long time, long crooked time. Okay? It's not happening.
So, so, so let me correct some, so the notion that it's not costing the town anything is incorrect, because we certified the number of homestead exemptions when we committed our taxes. So if they, if they were to
Approve it.
approve it, it would be coming out of the abatement, out of abatements, and it would be the town paying for it, because we already certified. You didn't get your application in in a timely manner, and there's no means by this board to approve an application after the fact.
So your recommendation is that we deny it?
Deny.
Okay, is there a motion to deny?
I make a motion to deny.
Lori, is there a second to this? Second, Dave? Any more discussion on this? All in favor? Thank you, Arlie, sorry.
Sorry.
To deny.
No problem.
Alright, Article.
I'll ask gently though, for real. Okay? It's really not how you take care of our town, okay? Because I, I, I'm really not a person that's very, okay? Just because I speak the truth. And I'm disappointed with Mr. Dubois that you would deny that, that you take me out.
Okay, let's, uh, let's move on to Article Eight. To consider board appointments for vacancies on the finance committee. Gary, you have.
So this is, uh, continuing business from our last meeting.
Yes.
With a couple of people that are interested, potentially serving on the finance committee, they're here with us tonight. Chris and Ken.
And they'd be, uh, they'd be great, uh, uh, people to add to the finance committee myself, so. If that's the case, you need a motion and a second from us to be able to prove that?
Yes.
I make a motion to appoint Ken Johnrow and Chris Brayley to the finance committee.
Moved by Lori, is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by Doug, any discussion? And the regrets?
It's your last chance.
Next month.
Okay. All in favor? Thank you guys for stepping up on this, appreciate it. Yeah.
Gary, are you gonna kind of talk us through, like, we're all three new members, Dave was the chair, he's on, you'll set up the meeting or tell us?
Yep. So typically what we're gonna do, the board's gonna start working on the budget with the department heads. And once we get to a point, we, I think we typically, uh, once we have a budget, that the board is ready to put before the finance committee, the finance committee will work with, uh, a member of the board will work with the finance committee and they'll meet for, isn't that how we do it?
I, I, yeah, but there, there, there should be a preliminary meeting.
Yeah, take it off.
I, I think, to kick it off, and just to go through there, there, I don't know if you've seen the bylaws of the finance committee?
I gave them.
Okay, well anyways, it's a two pager, I think.
I gave, yeah, I gave them.
I think it's a two pager, and, and what you're gonna be in there, you're gonna have to elect a chair amongst yourselves. And then from there, uh, there's going to be, uh, basically, um, uh, someone will be responsible if, when, if and when they can, to attend board meetings that have to do with budgets. One of the representative would be down here, and the other one would be when they do the budget reviews and stuff.
Well, probably more than one.
No, it'd be one, that's where it's gonna start. Oh, you mean?
More than one representative from the.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's, yeah, I mean, we can probably do, go through the bylaws in the first meeting, and then discuss.
Usually, it was true.
They're usually true. Yeah. Set up your, uh, yeah, set up your, uh, your group. Does that make us complete at that point?
I think so.
Okay. So if you could call the meeting, an organizational meeting basically, and just go through those ground, you, uh, who's our board rep?
Can you get me all your emails? Can you get me all your emails? I know, I, I have a first, but I don't have Ken's.
We, we need to find out who the board rep upstairs is.
Not, well, it was, uh, yeah, was it? It was Tom Kent, wasn't it?
It was, uh, uh, Rob.
Cozy?
Yeah. Robert, yeah.
Well, we'll have to find out who you're back.
I believe so, yeah. So anyway, just find out, and then get together, set up a meeting, start the process. We will keep you informed, every document that this board receives, and as well as the understanding is that all the school, uh, uh, activity on their budget will be presented to you as, as quickly as, you know, we get it, you'll, you'll get those copies. And when we go through the budget process, you'll have an opportunity to sit with us and participate in that budget development as we go through it. So, again, I wanna thank all of you, Lori, the two new members, thank you. Okay, we're all set there?
Yeah.
Alright. Uh, to consider one board appointment to the Northern Rooster Airport Authority. We do have an interested person?
Yes, so Paul Shassy.
Paul?
Paul works with the school, he's also a reserve officer with us, has expressed interest in serving up there. And, uh, that's by appointment.
And I believe, uh, on the airport, which I represent the town there, uh, with that, that would fill in Matawaska as three representatives on there. And I believe at that point, we're just about a full board with that appointment. So is there a motion to approve, uh, Paul Shassy as the third Matawaska rep?
Who?
Moved by Doug?
Second.
Second by Dave? Any discussion on that? All in favor? Gary? The next, uh, if you're gonna make contact with him, for the airport. Uh, next meeting. Yeah, the next meeting will be, um, Wednesday, March eighteenth, at five PM, at the airport.
Roughly two months from now.
Roughly two months, we just finished the budget. We just went through the process, and they go every other month, but we just finished the pro, the budget.
Eleven?
Yeah, we're up to number eleven. Article, uh, to, uh, to consider discussion regarding vacancies on the two thousand twenty Acadian Festival Committee.
So Sharon from the, from the chambers here.
Hi Sharon.
Hi.
Uh, we met, uh, I went down there, met with Sharon last week, we had a meeting with some of the, uh, Sharon, Jane, Carter, and some of the prior, uh, fit members on the, on the committee, uh, to discuss the, this year's Acadian Festival and the plan moving forward. So in talking with Jane, there are people that have stepped up and they would agree to step up and, and help, spearhead this year's Acadian Festival, uh, with, with the town helping out. Uh, and doing a lot of the, some heavy lifting, and, and, you know, being more proactive on the front end of the planning of, of the Acadian Festival. So our plan, our plan, I think we have a planning place. Um, uh, Jane, uh, and Sharon were so gracious to, uh, step up. The chamber has, has, are the, has requested some additional funding to cover her, her hours. Uh, they project a couple hundred hours to plan. And so what we're gonna do is, we were left, uh, in the black pretty good last year with the last Acadian Festival. There's enough proceeds in the account for the Acadian Festival that we can uh, appropriate some money to the chamber to help offset some of the, the cost of labor, to have Sharon take care, take on these extra duties. Um, the rec, uh, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna work, we're gonna have the, the PD, direct department, Public Works, myself, Keith, in his office, uh, work with the chamber and Acadian Festival Committee, uh, what each of our own departments can do, uh, to help, you know, pull it off again one more year. Um, we made that commitment. I gotta sit down with a few more departments, uh, I met with a couple since then, and I still have a few more that I need to meet with and bring them all in. Uh, have a discussion about what we're thinking about doing, what's their, what's their involvement going to be. And then from there on, we'll, we'll sit in on the, on the meetings that they have. Uh, so we can plan well in advance of, um, the Acadian Festival, the week of the Acadian Festival, or the mobilization weeks just ahead of the Acadian Festival, to make sure that we have all the resources and staff scheduled and available to help out. And that's the big thing, um, you know, we can commit resources and manpower as long as we know in advance um, what, what the expectations are, and the guys can schedule accordingly.
So what, what, uh, what is Jane's responsibility gonna be now? Because you mentioned both of them roughly at the same, same time, so is she going to be part of the chamber's board, is she gonna be paid too, or, or not, no?
No, no, no.
She's not?
Jane's gonna help with the planning.
So, so she'll chair, is she gonna, is she gonna basically chair the event or the festival?
Because she has the history. No, there's really no chair. There's a point person, a secretary, and a treasurer.
And Jane's a point person?
No, I'm the point person.
Okay.
But Jane's gonna be involved because she has the history.
That was a very early planning meeting, and I don't, I think the titles have been issued just yet.
No, that's fine, I, I just didn't know what we were, if Jane was thinking of something else other than what, what, what we considered.
No, she's, I think she's, uh, as long as she knows, uh, that there's gonna be some manpower behind it to do a lot of the, the heavy lifting, she's perfectly fine helping to do the planning, making phone calls, you know, making, getting things in place.
Right.
Yeah. She's eager, I would say she's eager to do that.
Um, nice.
Yeah.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pick on Chris maybe, I might have to answer this, but, um, I, I know, like, you know, the town gives a little bit of money, but didn't, did you guys do a lot of fundraising last year?
Last year, we didn't have much opportunity through the planning stages to do any fundraising. Last year was actually the first year that we didn't have to focus a significant amount of effort on that because of the additional funding that was put forward. But typically, yes, it does require significant amount of, of resource.
And there, they did, Sharon and Jane talked about that, and Sharon knows it, she's gonna do the solicitations for fundraising and.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just, um.
Are you still involved with that?
Well, and I, I want to be, I didn't go to that first meeting, um, they have one, they have one tomorrow night.
Oh, we've got a meeting tomorrow night.
It kind of now puts me in a position with the board meetings, the Acadian Festival committee meetings, and the finance committee meetings,
Yeah.
Finance committee.
And trying to run the business in the evening, that I, I'm not sure how much I can dedicate, I, I certainly want to, um, but to say, like, I'm gonna, uh, commit, you know? I'm, I'm happy that where the town is stepping up, I only wanna express this one concern. And not that you guys are any better than anyone else, but I, I'm just hopeful it doesn't, you know, end up too much of your time, because you guys, like, I know you're working on a huge project that's like, really important, and not that the festival's not important, but I just don't want the community to expect that the town employees are now gonna be able to run the festival. Like, I don't, I don't want that message getting out there that that's what's happening.
That's not.
Because you guys have a lot, you know?
That, that's not how we see you.
Okay.
All right, but the point was made and, yeah, I think you're making the point.
Yeah, yeah, and if somebody watching wants to help, they certainly could.
Absolutely.
They, they certainly could show up and, and get involved.
I think earlier on, in the early planning stages, we're gonna be, the town's involvement is going to be, uh, sitting down, figuring out what resources we need to bring when it's boots on the ground time, they're getting, you know, the heavy lifting time. And, and planning accordingly, uh, you know, Sharon and Jane and, and the people at the chamber have, uh, in the Acadian Festival have, uh, stepped up to do all the planning, all of that early stuff, you know, the, the party planning, you know, which is something that I don't do very well, so I'm thankful that you guys stepped up to, to do that, so.
Excellent.
I think we're gonna be good.
Good. Anything else Sharon, you'd like to add at this point?
No, just anybody who wants to join the committee, come on down.
There we go.
There we go.
All right, well, thank you, thank you for everyone for stepping up.
Okay.
Appreciate it. All right, Article twelve. To consider a request by the Matawaska Police Association, NPA, to abolish the NPA and join the New England Benevolent Police Association. We do have a rep, uh, from the union here tonight, Jamie, is that you?
A rep from the association.
I mean, the association, I said union. And we, we, we do have your letter. And, uh, can you basically go through your, in your, you know, your, your thought process and what you're looking for from the board and what the board would have to do for you to allow you to do this?
So before, before we start, so Doug and I have already met.
Oh, that's right.
We were, we were tasked to meet with the, uh, the association, we did meet with them, let's have some early discussions and we asked them to come here tonight, uh, to discuss.
So you guys are all on the same page?
Pretty much.
Well, you know, it's good to know.
Well, the only, the only question I have, of course, is that, you know, it's a thought of local control. You know, and if we're losing local control, it, it, it concerns me a little bit because now it falls into other, other, uh, other people's hands and, and that's, that's sometimes becomes an issue for us because now we're no longer dealing with individuals and within our town.
Then we don't.
Then we know, we're dealing with outside, outside unions and reps. So that's, that's my concern, I'm not saying that I'm gonna vote against it, but I'm just saying that that is a concern.
Jamie?
The association is already an established bargaining unit with the state. We have been for forty, forty years, I believe. Um, my thought process on joining a union is the, uh, the benefits that we would get and also the, uh, the additional legal representation if we would need it in the event. And we go out there every day, we go to work, we don't know what we're gonna face, we don't know if we're gonna be involved in a car accident or, God forbid, we cause a car accident for whatever reason and somebody gets hurt. Uh, you know, there's, there's the, the, the chance that we may end up having to use deadly force. Um, at that point, if something like that should happen, we call our union rep. They send a team of attorneys to come and represent us, uh, the police, and this is all they deal with is police-related issues. Um, you know, we're not calling one of the local attorneys who deals with property disputes and anything and civil matters. These guys are represent, represent, representatives of police in New England. Um, the selling point for me was, we all, we have to pay dues to be part of the union. Uh, right now, we pay five dollars a week into our association. That money goes into an account that we have, which is basically a savings account. Uh, we have about thirty-eight hundred dollars in that account that we've accumulated over the years. Cause we've spent, we spend some, we put some in and we take some out. Uh, right now, we have a running balance of about thirty-eight hundred dollars. Uh, if one of us would need some legal representation for something very, very serious, that money would not cover much of anything, I would think. Uh, so for eleven dollars and some cents per officer per week, we could, uh, that would be our dues for the, uh, the members of the, the, uh, NEBPA. And all these benefits would be, um, the benefits would be available to us if we needed it. So it's not, our intent is not to bring in heavy hitters. Um, I've been doing the con, uh, negotiating contracts for the past few years. Uh, I've been successful, Chief Dubois was the president before me. Uh, he was successful at negotiating fair contracts and it's not an issue of the police department or the police association feeling as though we're not being treated fairly by the town. Uh, it's just to have that, what I call, an insurance, of having this representation if we need it. My intent is still to negotiate our contract without bringing in union representatives to do it. We can do it as, as we see fit, as long as we all agree. To some point, I guess, if we come to a point where we wouldn't agree, we could bring in others. But I don't foresee that would be an issue at all. Uh, I think we could all sit around a table and negotiate a contract without having to bring strangers in, if, if that's the concern.
Gary, have you or, or anybody else ever had, um, a discussion with our lawyers as far as representation for them, if ever they did face an issue?
Maybe fall under some type of, uh...
I think they would fall, i- it's more, I think if they found themselves in a legal matter where, you know, they wouldn't be defended by the town, they would have a, a defense.
Which, which, there would be cases like that.
There would be cases like that.
Yeah.
You know, if there was something, I'm, I'm just pulling something out of the sky, or if there was a termination as a result of something that happened, an incident, uh, where you felt like they might have been wrongfully, wrongfully terminated or something to that effect, they would have representation.
Which we would not be able to offer them because it would be a conflict of interest.
We would be on the other side of the issue, so they wouldn't have the benefit of our attorneys.
Right, I get it.
Okay. But if, if something would happen to any of these officers while they're on duty, perchance somebody gets hurt, killed, or something, they're already insured, aren't they?
Food workers' law.
If they're on the job. They don't have like, uh, an umbrella insurance through the town that ensures them, uh, for, while they're working?
There's gotta be a general liability.
Like, if they were sued for shooting someone, then they must be covered.
We have a liability coverage, but I think there's, there's limitations to...
Well, yeah, ceilings, I imagine, yeah, sure, like anything else.
I think, I think more the issue of negligence or something that, that would fall outside our umbrella is what, what they're concerned about.
Yeah.
Now, you said, I thought I understood, you said it would only be police matters, um, but then you talked about termination. So now, are they gonna be part of a union that's gonna cost us a lot of money if we're trying to terminate one of, not that, you know, I just, I wanna understand exactly what we're going to do? Would they cover you in a termination, or?
Our, our union representatives, uh, legal representatives would, would represent us.
Yeah.
Uh, and then if the town was looking to terminate somebody, then, if I understand this correctly, then your attorneys would be representing you, uh, and then...
So any other employee that works here that wants to fight the town for like, a wrongful termination, has to get their own lawyer? Is that right, or?
They're not part of the union, correct?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not against, I'm just, I need to understand before I...
Um, I guess I, I, I came here tonight because it was, uh, it was put in, into the agenda. Um, still kinda working out a lot of the details, so I don't have all the answers to your questions. Um, at some point, if, you know, we could get one of the union reps to come here and have a discussion to answer all these questions. Um, you know, I'm kinda doing the best I can with the information that I have.
Don't think we necessarily...
I think it's a, I think it, it's a win-win. Uh, we're not, like I said, we're not looking to, to get union representation to go against the town. But that's not the intent here whatsoever. And, and I think if we can have our own team of, of attorneys that would come and represent us if we needed it, uh, it's a win-win. Doesn't cost the town anything, it's, we're the ones that are paying it out of our pocket.
Let's take a step backwards, just, just for me to get a, a complete understanding. Do you need, for, for, for you to become part of a union, do you need for us to sign off on this?
No.
You can do this. You're, this is like a courtesy thing that you're trying to work with us?
I wrote the letter, I wrote the letter to Gary back in September, uh, as a courtesy. Uh, we, the association has been talking about joining a union for many years. For whatever reason, nobody really looked into it, they thought it might have been a, a more, a significant expense for the officers to pay dues like sixty or seventy or eighty dollars a week out of their check, you know, uh, oh. So I just basically made a phone call to the, the, the New England Benevolent Police Association represents, uh, Caribou PD, they represent, uh, the sheriff's office, other local agencies around. Um, so I got a phone number for a rep, I called him and just basically shot the breeze with him for half hour, forty-five minutes. And, um, when I went back to, to the guys in the association, I said, look, for eleven dollars and fifty cents a week, uh, you know, we could be part of this, this, uh, this union, this police union. And everybody, we had a vote on it and everybody said, yeah, let's do it. You know, if it's not, it costs us more than six dollars and fifty cents, more than what we're paying now, and looking at the benefits of it, so...
Is this, uh, you do have an employee that works for you guys, uh, your secretary? Is she excluded from this? Would she be excluded from that, or whoever that position with, with, whoever holds that position?
Uh, right now, it would just be, uh, myself and the officers.
You're looking at six, uh, you're looking at six, uh, people?
Yep.
And have you all voted as a group, either by consensus and stuff, is everyone on board with this?
Association, yes.
Association's on board? All members of your...
All members of the association are.
The reason I was asking, is my understanding is that you really don't need our blessing for you to do this.
Well, yeah, that's the thing is with the article, it says to consider a request.
Yeah.
And it's, it's really not a request, it was more of a notification, I guess.
Yeah.
When I sent the letter to Gary, uh, back in September, uh, just out of courtesy to, to let, and we don't wanna start doing things behind anybody's back, we wanna be transparent and when we decided that we wanted to try to become a member of a police union, um, the first thing I did was reach out to Gary in the form of a letter, uh, so that he could share it with anybody else that needed it.
So I guess my next question at this point would be, you know, if, if, if this is going to be a done deal, whether we want to or not, we really don't have to sign off on this, right?
There's a...
I, I, if, if, we don't have to, I guess we don't have to take a vote to, to, to allow you to do this?
There's a form, that's a, a voluntary agreement that was sent to me.
The form here?
Yes.
Which is a courtesy, which, which...
Again, if, 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 uh, if Gary or the board says, no, you're not gonna sign that, it, it really doesn't matter.
Right.
It's gonna happen.
Well, and yeah, and what three D off to is, like, I, I, when I said to, to consider, I mean, if this is something that you guys can do on your own, then I can, I can understand certainly why you would want this.
Right. And, and I guess I didn't really want it to come out the way it is, but it's, uh, I guess we're at that form where we're telling you, we're telling you that we're doing this.
Yeah, no, that's good, I mean, that's, that's kind of, that makes it easier and...
And I think at first, it was a little bit of confusion as far as, and I didn't know either.
Okay.
If we needed approval, but, uh, by state law, uh, we can join a union.
Yes. Well, we, you know, uh, at this point, I guess...
There's no action on this.
There's no action to take, all, all I can say at this point is thanks for at least having this, advising us and coming to this, uh, table to talk about it and stuff.
You're welcome.
Really appreciate it.
It said it's still in, in, it's still a work in progress, it's just nothing's a done deal yet. Uh, we still have to be voted in by, by the unions, it will be a fifty-one percent vote. Uh, that has not happened yet. So for whatever reason, uh, they may, they could shoot it down and then we just go back to what we're doing.
Okay, we're good. Do you have any more questions?
Dan's got a question.
Hmm, okay, go ahead.
I'm really thankful that they've approached the board in this manner, uh, to, you know, give you people a heads up, uh, because main statute does allow any bargaining unit or, or any association, uh, to unionize. Being a thirty-year veteran of the union, I know for a fact that there's always a negative connotation to, to a union. They think it's the big black monster, but, uh, the, uh, uh, you know, I've, I've watched the negotiations of the police officers in this town now from the time that our past chief, Ron Pelletier, was instrumental in, in, in getting this association underway. And, uh, of course, you know, when you're negotiating money, there's always pulling and tugging. Uh, that's fine and dandy, but at the end of the day, when you sign on the dotted line, there, there, there's a reason why it's called a, a, a legally, uh, binding labor agreement. It's an agreement between both parties and up until this day, that has always gone over quite well with the police department and personally, I, I don't foresee any change in this for the exception of their insurance coverage. And we have to, uh, we have to be realistic and if we listen to the local news, just in the last six months, right in our immediate area, uh, there has been, uh, several situations where legal representation is gonna be necessary for people that have been involved in different incidences. Uh, and I, I feel that, uh, with everything that we see going on around us, especially the drug scene, these mind-altering drugs, uh, it is very conceivable that an officer in this community would be forced to draw his weapon. God forbid that that would ever happen, but when the day comes, if ever that would happen, uh, you, you certainly wanna make sure, double sure, that you are amply, uh, covered with insurance.
Thank you, Mr. Dale, appreciate it.
As it was explained to me by, by the union rep, if one of us ends up in a situation, and I'll just give an example that we have to use deadly force, the first phone call the officer makes is to a direct supervisor. That supervisor, which would be me, as far as the union rep goes, or the union, or the shop steward, I make one phone call to my union rep and then they get the ball rolling. As it is right now, if that was to happen tonight, I don't know who I would call. I, I really don't, and that's kinda scary.
Okay.
So it was explained to me that from that initial phone call, they will represent us through any legal proceedings, any criminal proceedings, if, if it goes that way, uh, all the way through five years down the road, if the family is seeking a wrongful death suit, they're still representing us.
Is this done at no cost, no extra cost?
No extra cost, right, just union dues, but you have thousands of officers that are paying these dues as opposed to five guys. So I'm sure they have a bank account somewhere.
A bank account, but they must also purchase insurance.
I'm sure they do.
Yeah, it's all part of that.
Yeah.
Okay, well...
Thank you for...
Wish you the best.
Yeah.
Thank you for coming. All right. Article thirteen. Consider the draft town of Matawaska communication and social media policy. We have that in front of it here, in, in front of us here?
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, I've, I've, I've looked at it, I, I, I'm gonna tell you, I've not read word for word for word, but it's something that I think that we need to take a serious look at and, and at some point, whether this is the document or a, an, an adaptive form of this document or whatever, I think we, 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 we serve our town and, and our people to have this, uh, uh, policy adopted at some point.
Who created this?
Keith's worked on that and, and, uh, we've pulled bits and pieces of so- social media policies in different communities. Um, we didn't have to read that to read. Keith, if you wanna grab?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's pretty, we don't have one right now, um, so it's very boilerplate. Uh, I, I didn't really dive, I didn't deep dive into any one specific segment, I, I, the way I looked at it and I put it in front of our department heads, Gary's seen it as well. Um, I basically, I've, I've asked everyone to sort of review it, take a look, and if there's any additions or subtractions, I, I have no problem, uh, switching it up. My mentality was, we should put something in, in, that we have now and, uh, as we work through it, if we start to see kings in the armor, or we see things that we feel are more important, that we can then amend that con, that, uh, policy if, if needed.
So who, who is gonna monitor? Who's gonna be, who's gonna be?
Yeah, who's the...
Who's gonna be watching over this if, if we have, uh, say, a Facebook account?
That guy.
So, I mean, we're gonna, basically, the way that we plan to structure our, our social media presence is to have a town Facebook account, not linked to anybody's personal, what, uh, thing, which is how things have been done. Each of the departments use, uh, one of the employees' Facebook account, that's the sub-account for that, for that department. And with freedom of information, uh, you, you have to preserve information that we put out there. Um, having people's, that, town's business tied into personal accounts is not a wise thing to do. So, uh, we've given, we've been talking about this for a good, a good year here about the need to put together a social media policy and to have a structured social media presence, if you will. Uh, and this is going to be our guide. And we're, the plan, I think we've met with the department heads, um, who have social media, uh, accounts. Uh, and the plan is, is we're gonna designate a person to be the, the, the point administrator for the Facebook uh, account for the town. Uh, each department will have acc- access to their respective departments underneath, you know, the main account. Uh, there'll be one administrator, uh, who oversees it all. Um, the goal is to have a consistent, uh, message that we put out. We wanna put, basically...
Are you gonna allow comments on this stuff?
No.
So any, so what we're doing is, we're just putting information out, we're not receiving anything?
No.
In any way?
No.
From anybody?
No.
Not to let me...
People wanna make comments, they can make comments here, they can, they can send an email, they can, and you can put, uh, we can put an email address where comments can be directed to.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's not gonna be a venue for back and forth.
Okay, so we...
Where we can't control, we'd have to go back and monitor the comments and delete stuff that's inappropriate, I think that, that's gonna be a full-time job in and of itself.
And, and what we'd like to do, if you don't mind, sorry to jump in.
Go ahead.
Um, ideally with this is, any information that we provide, uh, we wanna be able to have that link back to our website, which, which I know and I think everybody who's here knows that our website needs some work and, and some revamp and we wanna work towards that. But basically, the social media policy, communication and social media policy is, is step one. Before we can do any of that, we need to have something in place with some checks and balances as to what we as employees can and can't do. Um...
So how often are we gonna post? What are we gonna post? We're just gonna do this at once a month, once a week?
No. No, 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 I mean...
We've got notable things, events, rec department uses Facebook a lot.
Yeah, the rec department uses it a lot, um, in my department.
The board agendas can be put there and the meetings are and...
Uh, and, you know, for myself and my department, um, I've really put the brakes on what I'm doing because I, any information that I've been putting out has been put through my personal... because I, any information that I've been putting out has been put through my personal account. And given the last six months of working here, I try to stay off of that as much as humanly possible, um, for obvious reasons. So I'd like to get to a point where we can, we can have a town site, Facebook page, as opposed to Keith's Facebook page.
Yeah.
Uh, and and working through that, that portion. Um, so yeah, I mean, I think any, you know, a a lot of what I hear is is people, they're either not aware of meetings, they're not aware of things that come up. We wanna be able to do that. This has to be step one. We need to make sure that as an organization, that the people that work for this organization understand what the the rules are, um, so then we can start.
So you're gonna, so so your thought is that we're gonna friend, we're gonna friend everybody in the community so that when we have our meeting, you're gonna send, uh?
Well, we we would, we would have to do some advertising that people would have to seek it out and follow that page. And I think we can advertise through our normal channels right now to do that. And if each department head or employee were able to to advertise it on their personal page to get them to that, then from that point, it just.
And somebody wants a request for information, you can suggest friend us on.
Right, well, yeah, exactly. And 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 anything that we're gonna put, we'd like to link it back to that website. And on that website, we have our contacts updated, that if they know it's an economic community development event, that my contact information will be on that website and they can reach out to me via email or phone or or, you know, however it may be, um.
Maybe I'm miss- missing something here, but do we actually have a website yet?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
The one that is not updated right now and?
Yeah, I mean, it's it's a bit anticipated. I mean, I I know we we do update it. I, it needs some work. It's gonna need a facelift. And and again, before we can get to that, I I'd like to make sure, and I know Gary feels the same way, that our department heads feel the same way. We gotta get ourselves the policy because the world just revolves online now and we gotta make sure that.
Have the board members, have you had a chance to read into this? You know, I skimmed it, it seemed to be.
And and I would ask it, you know, 'cause we don't need to drag this segment on for for an hour. But, uh, if you guys read through it in your personal time and you wanna send any changes you think I should make or have a discussion about it. Again, I put this together as boilerplate. I I I picked from, you know, I I looked through other towns that have such policies nearby, um.
Would we be, would we be out of line in saying this is, this draft is, uh, given to us for first reading? And, uh?
Can I?
Well, let me finish what, uh, my thought, and then at our next board meeting, we could, um, ratify it as part of the policy.
Sorry, I was thinking about it even before, yeah.
That's incredibly out of line. No, I'm just kidding. No, no, it's more than fine. If you guys want, if you guys wanna take.
No, I mean, I'm I'm just going at it as a thought. Will we not do it?
I'm down.
Well, I I read it, um, I I read through it. Actually, I skimmed it and then I went back and I read it. And I thought, I asked who did it, 'cause I thought it was really thorough. Um, if I was to sit here and pick it apart for a business, um, I would say, for me, my suggestion, you're at, you're at the point that you should implement. And as you go.
Right.
Um, you guys work together and make the changes and do the things that. I don't feel like you're gonna be able to fix it more than this until you start to to use it.
I I.
And then you can say, oh, that doesn't work, that's not right.
I, that was sort of my, that's how I felt.
I don't know if there's any danger in implementing it this way.
I mean, it's a lot more thorough than what we have now, which is nothing. And and as, and again, even as you guys as board members, if you come across something, an incident comes up and we say, hey, there's a gap in this document, well, then at that point, that'll be our, you know, then we have to relook at it, um. But I agree with you. I I I tend to agree that, for me anyway, I feel like it's ready to be implemented as is. If you, I'm perfectly, just as okay if you guys wanna take another month to to.
No, I just threw that as a thought.
Yeah, 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 of course. I'm okay either way. I I'm not gonna take offense, um.
I I think that we won't know what changes should be made until we work through the document.
Till you get your feet wet.
You know, we see the things that aren't quite right. Uh, as far as the rollout, I think what we discussed was, um, once this is adopted, we can start working on our Facebook page. Uh, and what will be a transition period, but everybody's gonna continue to use their, the pages that they have, their Facebook accounts. Uh, and they'll announce that we're gonna be migrating into our, into this other. And then they'll have, there'll be a month or whatever period of time that people will, we're gonna just push the message saying, you're gonna need to follow this page now. You know, because here's where we're gonna be live with it, or it's live now, but here's where we're coming off with our own personal accounts. So that people won't skip a beat.
So the different departments that have a s- a certain page set up already, whether on their personal, uh, pages or not, they're, those will have to go away?
Yes.
They cannot be used anymore?
I mean, we can recreate, we can recreate there, but I don't think we can grab that dragon.
No, 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 that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying, uh, that the official one will be through the town.
Yes.
Nothing else will be official. It'll be.
Sorry. I mean, there's a million, there's a million reasons why it shouldn't be that way.
Yeah. Yeah.
A simple reason would be, what if that employee leaves the organization? Then what? Then you're gonna have to do that anyway, right? So I think he needs to resign.
Well, I'm 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 hearing, I'm hearing a lot of positives, I guess more than I'm hearing negatives. So if 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 this board is ready to act on this, uh, I don't open it up for a motion and a second to approve it and let them start this.
I make a motion and we go ahead with this.
Move by David. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Doug. Any more questions, comments?
Um, I'd just like to say that, uh, I would like to see something started. Maybe completed, but at least started, get the Facebook going, and at least advertise meetings.
Right, yeah.
Okay, then build from there.
Yeah, as quickly as we can there.
As quickly and as easily as, yeah.
Like I said, it may take some little-fashioned advertising and pushing and word of mouth to be able to get people to that site. But I think I I, I'm looking at Sharon right now and I think she, I'm gonna go bug her.
They all have their, they all have their Facebook that they're using now. They could certainly advertise it.
Well, and here's the thing, if if we create this page, I'm gonna like that page. So if you've, if you've been following me to get the information I have, you're gonna, it's gonna, they're gonna connect, right? And eventually, um.
Well, you can see on your Facebook, uh, you know, like, whatever you call it, Manawaska Facebook account.
And I can put a cute little cat videos if anyone wants to watch it. Yeah, 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 yeah.
I I, you 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 were just gonna.
Yeah, my question is, do we continue with our, uh, website?
Yes.
Or is it gonna be just linked? We're gonna have both accounts?
Oh, no, we're gonna, the website's gonna maintain. Yeah, we need to, again, the the website needs some work as well. But what my thought process is, is I don't want Facebook to be the only way of communication. I want if we're gonna post something, it should link back to my website. And which is going to, which is going to then kind of nudge us in the rear end to get our our website up to snuff and and be able to. We want the website to be our primary mode of communication.
It could also be a label to, or, uh, link to Chamber of Commerce.
Of course.
Right, like, can there be forms on the website, forms that people could print, download, um?
Yeah. Yeah.
Eventually try to get through the regulations.
That was too short, it was a real question.
Are we gonna win?
Yeah, no.
Yeah, I know.
Are we gonna appoint somebody to do this? The more and more you get involved with this, the more and more you're, it it's time to go.
Time, yeah. Well, we're posting meetings now, so posting meetings on on a board and posting meeting on a Facebook page.
I, uh, we still, we still, a lot of details we need to work out about, 'cause we certainly, like, like you said, I agree. We don't want just one person having to turn that into their job and then they have to leave other things. But I think, I think we can set it up in a way in which certain people.
Each department's gonna, I mean, as far as being labor-intensive, they're already doing it?
It's already doing.
Yeah, maybe it's just, it's just we're all doing it.
There's gonna be an administrative oversight of that.
Right, it's gonna be all in the same place. We have some details to work out, but again, we get step one out of the way, then we can start working on step two.
Gotta keep it simple.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
We have a question.
Oh, we're in the middle of it. Okay, quick question?
Okay, I'll be the first to admit that I'm old school and, uh, I struggle with this. Uh, just a couple of quick questions. Uh, is there a cost involved with this?
None on the, on the Facebook part of it, no. Uh, when we get to, if we get to revamping a website.
That's a different story.
That's a different story. We're not there yet. Uh, there will be a bit of a cost in making sure that our, if it, if we have to do some updates for our website to make it more functional for what we're doing, there may be.
Okay, I'm, uh.
But Facebook, Facebook, the, that portion of it should cost.
It'll be free. I think if you wanna boost, you have to pay for boosting and stuff like that.
And I'm not too familiar how all of this works. I know I have my own personal website. I have my own personal business Facebook page, my personal, personal Facebook page. Um, the the question in my mind is, why couldn't, why couldn't this information be posted on the town website? 'Cause there there are a lot of people are complaining that, you know, they're they're not properly informed about meetings. Uh, well, we have that board that's updated regularly downtown by the McDonald's restaurant. Uh, and if I'm interested in the Long Lake Ice Fishing Derby, I certainly will be watching for it and looking for it. So I don't totally understand why we need a Facebook page to inform people. If they're that interested in what's going on, well, we don't see them here tonight. Uh, why don't they go to the town website to see when the next meeting is?
Well, it's like anything else, you know, it's, if you're friending me, then the information comes to them directly.
Right.
You know, so now it's in front of them and it's on their Facebook.
Well, if they're interested, it's time for them to engage.
Yeah.
Secondly, uh, I know for my personal business, uh, they 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 stuck this contraption in my pocket two years ago against my will to try to promote our business, uh.
And you've liked it ever since?
Well, uh, I I do have a certain level of intuition for it. But but, uh, people find this difficult to 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 believe, but I spend, I, during the snowmobile season, to try to contact snowmobilers, I'm on three out-of-state snowmobile sites. I spend three hours every single day, private messaging snowmobilers out of state to try to increase our business. Now, and and I know that it sounds absurd, and it is, because I could spend three hours actually working, being more productive. But I I I just have an inner fear that people that are left with the task of monitoring this Facebook page for the town of Manawaska will get consumed in the same rut that I'm consumed in, spending three hours a day on Facebook, accomplishing absolutely nothing.
We're not gonna be receiving comments on that page. It's gonna be a lot different than your page.
It'll be shut down for comments.
Okay, that was a negative, uh, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Did we vote on this?
No.
No.
All in favor? It is carried. And you'll keep us in tune as to how it's going and how many posts we get, uh, we don't, we won't get posted. But we're putting out there samples, you'll send, well, we'll all be part of that, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, yes, sir.
You'll be going ourselves and.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Is this a big step for you? I mean, time-wise?
Oh, no, 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 not at all.
No.
No, this, no, for me.
Your, your time is valuable. You know that I realize how valuable your time is.
Nobody's ever said that to me before.
And I, and and this stuff is interesting and it's important.
Yeah.
But I don't want you to be putting more time into this than necessary.
Right.
You have enough to do without having to deal with this.
I, I certainly.
Put your mind, put your mind at ease. I think when we first started having this discussion, we thought, we thought that we were gonna have one person, and all the departments were funneling the information to one person.
Babe, guys, guys.
Uh, but I think talking with the departments, we we realized that, that was gonna be, a full, we're gonna create a full-time job.
Mm-hmm.
And we're gonna.
No, that's what I thought.
No, we're not, we're not.
And and so, you know, first, we walked that back and we basically said, look, if we have a policy to guide us in what we can put in for content and what our, what we're supposed to, what our boundaries are, what the guidelines are, then they will police themselves, uh, and 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 post. And so they're already doing it. I mean, we've all done it at one point in time.
No, you wanna do it in one account.
But we wanna do it in one account.
It's it's, that is my concern. What you're, what you're, what you're, uh, questioning right now is is the time that it takes. And 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 that's what I'm afraid of, you know, I think.
If we had one person.
They're already doing it.
I know, I understand, and and I'm happy to hear that. I I wanna make sure that it goes that way. And if it changes and it, and you find that this is tying up your time more than it should be, then we'll, we'll have to go back and absolve.
We were just saying that, if if we wanted to go all out, you can make that somebody's forty, forty hour week.
I know that.
And and we, obviously, we don't have the funding for that or anything like, so we're, we're going to do it. We're gonna, we're gonna ball on a budget a little bit and, um, and we're gonna, we're gonna do what we can to get the information out there. Um, and then as it, you know, we'll just have to take it. But no, to answer your question, it's not going to.
You know, if he's feeding you information, you know, he's got all kinds of information about about snowmobiling up here.
Right.
Why don't you take, why can't we take that information and post it?
We'll have to.
You might have a hundred other of the, of these small businesses that are doing the same thing.
Now you're making it complicated.
Right, but.
I am, I'm, but that's what I'm saying. He, he, we could be facing that.
It's more of a Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna say, we gotta, I, we have to be careful about promoting specific businesses where.
Yeah, good point, Dave. So we're, we're gonna, we're gonna stick to just, just the departments and and.
But it's one of them.
Yes, exactly.
If it comes in, if it comes in in another, in another direction, you're gonna push him to the chamber?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's fine, I mean, I'm okay with that. I, I just don't want you to get tied up with this forty hours a week.
I mean, that's, yeah, yeah, no, I. I can't, I can't do marketing for for all the businesses in town, but what I wanna do is is to help our our taxpayers know the information that's happening and be aware. And quite frankly, Facebook is just the way they do that now. I mean, and people are getting their news from Facebook.
For a big, for a big sector of our population.
Right, for better or worse, a lot of people are gonna get a lot of their information.
People don't read the paper, they don't, they don't look at TV, they don't read the paper, they're not going by the sign. Their friends on Facebook, they're gonna get it in their face, 'cause they're on there one or two hours a day.
Thank you guys for pushing to get this done.
Yeah.
You bet.
Thank you for your time.
Very good, thank you.
Very good.
Good, uh, good step, good step forward. Uh, before we go to article fourteen, I just, something came through my head here that I just wanna, congratulations, Sam, being a dad.
Oh, that's great.
Is it the creepy eyes when you go away?
All right, let's go to article fourteen.
I'm a dad as well.
I didn't say that in there.
Consider two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty year-to-date town financials. Uh, department heads, town manager, uh, finance, uh, director have sat down and they've gone through the the current budget. And, um, they've come up with some potential, uh, uh, spending reductions, uh, that they've, we've all had a chance to look at it. Do we need to go through it or do you wanna make it, uh, verbalize it or what do you wanna do, Gary?
So, we were asked to go back and see if there were ways to to reduce the spending so we could try to roll more money back into the designated fund at the end of our year.
Yeah.
Uh, and so what we did is we met with the departments, um, and we had a little workshop to discuss, you know, what we can and what we cannot do. And and so what you have in front of you is 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 a result of of that discussion, of those discussions. Uh, and, you know, you have the printout for the year-to-date, uh, just six months of our budget, December third went. You have the, all of the respective accounts. Uh, I mean, you have a summary in the front of that, uh, for each account and where we could do stuff potentially, uh, and where we can't, where we feel that we can't do anything, um, potentially. So it's up to you how you wanna proceed with with this discussion. If you want, I can talk, I can talk down through.
You know, I would, I would, I wouldn't mind if we went through those three pages that you could go through and 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 basically, um, just say that we've, uh, we think we could save money here or whatever, and where you can't save money, well. Before we get into that, are we not going to face this anyway, um, through the budget process? Are we not gonna go through every one of these?
This is the nineteen budget. We're gonna be working on the twenty budget.
The twenty we're gonna be.
So we're, we're having a discussion about our current budget.
Just the current one right now.
It it's going to be relevant.
Six months into that. I understand, okay.
It's a sort of a indication of of an early budget discussion, you know, where we're talking about the same things here, except that we're in, we're in six months into our current budget.
Right.
Um, so with that said, first.
Gary, um, uh, do we have extra copies? I'd like to share those with Chris and with Ken today.
We can make some. I don't have, I don't have extra copies here, but, uh.
Can we, can we get those to you guys, Paul, Dana, can you, are here, want to make the copies of mine?
The door's unlocked.
Well, we wanna.
You wanna do another?
Yeah, while we're waiting, let's do that. Article fifteen, consider the, uh, VRF and NARA committee reports. VRF, uh, we do have a, their minutes of December sixteen, uh, for your info. The, uh, airport does not have a written report, but we, just to give you up to date, that we finalized the upcoming budget. And letters are going to be going to each community member, uh, letting people know, uh, what those assessments will be moving forward. Um, we'll review that again on the airport side, uh, during our budget deliberations. Chances are, we will have a representative from the airport here for any questions anyone may have. And I would assume, uh, uh, the VRF does the same thing. At that point, they'd have someone here to explain when we, you know, bring our department heads and, uh, we go through budgets. So, uh, so do you have any other reports on that, Doug, on the, uh, on that? Dana, Gary, you're all set on the, uh, VRF?
Yes.
Okay. Let's go back to fourteen. Let's go back to fourteen. Go ahead, Gary, why don't we start off and just go through those three pages and let us know what you found with your department heads?
So, the government body, uh, which is basically you folks in the budget, your payroll, legal, uh, the town's legal costs uh, are funneled through the government body. Um, it's really no, uh, we don't see any opportunity to reduce anything there. I mean, we're gonna have consumed our legal budget with everything going on. And payroll is payroll, your stipends are there. Uh, town administration, the only account that we could, uh, we could tweak on is the the travel training account. Um, I estimate we could probably reduce that by four thousand. Um, public health and general assistance, um, again, uh, I don't see anything that we can do there to reduce, uh, spending. Municipal building, uh, you can see what I have is the parentheses is the account number, miscellaneous, could probably knock five hundred bucks off of that. Fifteen hundred dollars out of janitorial. And we had planned to do, paint the, uh, town office side in the interior building this year, we did that, uh, we budgeted for that. That was gonna be a winter project. Uh, we decided that if there's something that we could afford to put off, uh, that's one thing that we can wait. I I wanna probably go off and say that, uh, some of the things that we have here, you know, as potential for savings, are things that we you gotta keep in mind that if we don't do it now, we might have to do, probably do it next year. So, saving it now will have the result of letting us roll more money into surplus, but then on the flip side, some of these things are, we're gonna have to budget for in the next budget too. So it doesn't, helps us here, doesn't help us in the next budget cycle, okay?
Well, we'll deal, the the next budget cycle has its own, another budget cycle.
Safety complex, uh, we had, uh, budgeted for a LED light replacement project there, a thousand bucks, we could put that off. Elections, and we don't see that we can reduce anything there, it's a busy election year, uh, this coming year. Um, with, with primaries and all that stuff, so it's just not gonna, it's not a big budget to begin with. And, uh, there's not really, nothing there that we can do. Uh, developing codes and assessing, Department two hundred, uh, we can reduce the travel budget by about a thousand. We think, you know, we can, by limiting the amount of content we put on our digital sign, uh, we can shave three hundred bucks there. Our real estate agent fee and our personal property agent fee, we could each, uh, drop a couple grand there. Um, community development activity, twenty-two hundred bucks. And Acadian Day, I mean, that's something that if we decide that we don't wanna do, we're gonna have to give these people some notice because they're planning the concrete, uh, it's planning for Acadian Day. And so I think, you know, we'd be doing them a pretty big disservice if if we were gonna say we're not gonna do that no more. Uh, because they're already planning on doing it.
Do they have a date on that yet?
April fifteenth.
September fifteenth? Down in August.
Uh, the ambulance department.
But August would be into another budget, wouldn't it?
Yeah, but I mean, they're, they're on a different financing year than, uh, fiscal year than we are. So whatever we're doing now is going to be for next summer, their their festivities. Minor equipment, um, six grand, we we can, if we can afford to put off or a replacement of repairs of equipment. Uh, police department, we have a, uh, vacancy that's still, uh, with with Matt DeRogger, uh, leaving us. His position is still vacant. Um, a lot, a lot of people who intend to become police officers, so it takes a lot to fill vacancies, not just here in Madawaska, but everywhere. Uh, we could leave that position, uh, vacant for a while, that would save us twenty-eight thousand dollars by the end of fiscal year. Fire department, uh, they're bare bones, I, no rejection, uh, reductions projected there. EMA is the same, emergency management. Library, um, no reductions projected there. Public Works, all depends on kind of winter we're gonna have. I know that, um, they are working with very little. Uh, and there's, again, if there's a department where, if we were to defer some expenses, we would certainly incur them the following year. Parks and Recreation, you know, we could potentially use the electric, uh, consumption bill over there. I don't, we don't have a number, we couldn't project out what we thought.
What would you do to save on electric, what?
I'm not sure.
Not, okay.
Townwide Insurance, that's, we're committed to that. Intergovernmental, uh, we have our streetlights account, which we feel that, uh, we'll be able to save four, four thousand dollars. And that's because when we ended up closing on the loan for that, uh, light project, the first payment is due in the next fiscal year, not this one. Sometimes when you do financing, they require a payment on the front end of the agreement. This company here, they took the fight, they, the first payment on the back of the agreement, but are, at the first year anniversary. So that definitely gives us an opportunity to, to save some money there this year. Social Services, uh, not projecting, uh, reductions there. Municipal debt, there's nothing we can do there. Pollution Control is a separate operating budget, uh, so we're not projecting to do anything over there. Uh, summary, uh, potential spending reductions is about ninety-four thousand five hundred dollars. That we think that we have the potential to kinda curtail spending and, uh, build some money back into the surplus.
So that would be less, a little bit less than a third of a mil could go back into the, uh,
Correct.
Undesignated fund.
And some of the accounts, granted, because, like you're, you're saying, um, no reduction, but it's because, you know, like the lottery money's already been given out, or this is, you have no choice, not like you can get the money back, right?
If there's any other reduction, would come as the, the year progresses on different budgets, if there's something that that doesn't get used, it automatically goes back into the, anyway, the general funds. So are we, are we to vote on this tonight, or is this just information?
These are, these are, these are things that we are actively doing, that we're gonna try to.
So this is a goal that you're setting that.
These are goals.
This should go back into the general fund.
It's gonna go back into the undesignated surplus.
Undesignated fund.
If it's not spent.
Which is where any of the funds that are not spent go anywhere.
Correct.
So now you're just what? You're trying to target a few that might? I don't understand the process, I guess.
I guess we'll be proactive.
Well, I guess the thing is, number one, our, 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 our undesignated fund balance was depleted because of the impeachment to the governor's paper, and we're way below our target for not even cash for our fund balance policy. So the only way that we can replenish our undesignated fund is to, whatever we have left unspent from our budgets that have been approved, goes there, or revenues over projected. Or what we projected will go there as well.
So this, that's what this all is, right?
Yep.
Yep.
It's not anything that we're doing differently.
Well, he's, he, he, I wanna disagree with that. He is being proactive in saying they're not gonna fill the police, try to fill the police department now. They're gonna try, you know, these are the targets that they're gonna, they've identified to say, okay, this is, you know.
Yep, I understand, yeah.
No, I.
It's not business as usual, I, 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 I get, but I know that they're working on that too, this, as we know, so.
And it brings, it brings a, uh, understanding to the public and as well as to the department heads that, you know, that we went through a rough, a rough budget, and that we're trying to work in a positive way to make it better in the long run. Uh, then we're gonna sit down and when we start the new budget, that's where our input will be, uh, pretty much needed at that point to be able to decide, you know, do we agree or disagree a certain amount, but any questions?
Yep.
Okay, well, thank you guys. Uh, thank you all the department heads for that work. We appreciate anything you guys can do. Uh, brings us to Article sixteen, and that's our town manager's, uh, report. We have a copy of that with us here, and we also have a F for information only, uh, on, uh, something Gary will talk about in a second. Let's go through your manager's report first.
So, this is after your curriculum today. Uh, today, UIG Pete Clavett from United Insurance School presented a, uh, check from MAMIC for our workers' compensation dividend, uh, for ninety-nine thousand five hundred thirty-two dollars and eighty-one cents. Typically, uh, the town does get a dividend check, uh, from, uh, from MAMIC. And that's something that we, uh, we anticipate, and we, that goes into the Dunes upper earned account, and we use that to reduce what we need to spend, uh, collector taxes. Uh, DEC Downtown Revitalization Grant, uh, this is a grant that we were informed a while back that we received. Uh, it was recently, you know, takes a lot to get these grants, uh, the administrative stuff done and and contracts assigned, so the contract with DECD was just signed. This grant is four hundred thousand dollars, it'll be used for downtown building facade improvements. Keith is working on the guide, the guidelines for that program, and it's gonna be businesses or properties on Main Street in the defined downtown area. Uh, the scope of work area that's been approved, uh, where if Vives wants to do, uh, some facade improvements, uh, that they can apply, come see Keith. Uh, there'll be some guidelines, there's gonna be a match obligation, uh, that hasn't been worked out yet. Um, but we will have, uh, a hundred thousand dollars available for businesses in town to leverage. Uh, and hopefully, you know, whatever the Keith comes up with for guidelines, working with DECD, it's gonna come before this board, uh, for final approval. Uh, and then I think February is your timeline, March, as as far as, you know, boots on the street and informing the public that there is this program that they can tap into to give their building a facelift. So, Usta County has informed us, uh, you have a copy of that letter, uh, that we plan to change your fiscal year from calendar year to July one, June thirty fiscal year. Most municipalities, uh, are this way. Uh, the schools are on fiscal year, July one. Uh, and then I think if you read the letter from the county, uh, their, their jail system is on fiscal year, July fiscal year as well. So they're looking to, uh, uh, right now, they're just talking about it, but I think they're in that direction, and they put together a series of greetings for the town managers and officials if they wanna participate, that they're sitting on that. Uh, so right now, we're penciled in, uh, to go, uh, Dana and I are penciled in to go to the one and fort again on February nineteenth. You hear what they have to say. And the last note in my manager's report is that, uh, every year in Madawaska, uh, the town recognizes employees for years of service. Um, this year, those employees are Chris Alver, with the ambulance department, who has five years of service. Kevin DeShane, who's a police department reserve officer, who has ten years of service. Diane Dion, uh, with Public Works, ten years of service. Ken Tario with the public library, fifteen years of service. And Ross Zibo, with the police department, with thirty years of service.
Thirty, oh.
So. It's nice when we recognize our employees.
Thank you, Ross. I think you're the only one here.
Survivor.
Survivor.
Gary, you wanna talk about this?
He just doesn't know when to.
Yeah, so. Tomorrow, uh, dude, this is a coincidence, uh, for the date, I have, I have to go, I'm in tomorrow for personal reasons, but, um, MDOT, uh, well, just to remind you, so I was appointed to that, uh, Transportation Study Commission for Funding Solutions. And, uh, so last Friday, uh, MDOT contacted me and wanted to know if I would, uh, say a few words. The state, the MDOT is going to, uh, be unveiling your three-year work plan for the next three years. And, uh, they've invited some people to come in and speak on behalf of that plan. So I was asked if I could go there, and I said, well, I gotta be in Portland for one, if I can be in Portland for one, um, if it not be late, then I, I'm available to do so. So I'll be in Augusta tomorrow, uh, to say a few words about the work that we've done on that commission for, uh, trying to find transportation funding solutions and the importance of, uh, funding infrastructure, bridges and roads in the state of New York.
Good.
How you getting tax electric cars?
Huh? We've had a lot of discussion about that. There's a lot of cars to be taxed in.
Can we set up a date for our next meeting?
It's date plus we need to talk about these for budget meetings.
Budgets, yeah. All right. When are you gonna get the preliminary of budgets, uh, from your department heads and?
They're working on their budgets now, and we can just give them a hard deadline for having those to us. Davey here?
Mr.?
Sure.
What's it gonna look like? So we're mid-January.
Yeah.
Do we wanna try to, when, when would the board like to first take a look at the budget? And we'll look backwards from there. You want it at the next board meeting? Do you wanna have? First of all, do you wanna have board meetings slash budget meetings? Where we might look at three, two or three departments, four departments?
Not to work.
Or do you wanna have specific meetings just to work on the budget? I think what we would do is, there are small budgets that we can bang out at regular board meetings, and larger departments that we could dedicate a meeting to.
Last year, we, we, we did that. And we also, when we got to the bigger budgets, we also, I think we met on a Saturday or a Sunday, whatever day it was.
We did a weekend workshop.
Weekend workshop on budget, so. Dana, when do you expect to have preliminary information for us?
Uh, if you could give me, probably another three weeks.
Three more weeks? So, so that would bring us into the second week of February.
Sure. So that would be right around our next meeting.
Yeah, that, that could coincide with our next meeting, yeah.
So what we could do is, we could plan our next board meeting and then figure out which of the departments we could squeeze into, uh, into our regular agenda so that, to not overwhelm that.
We're only gonna have, uh, we're only gonna have one meeting a month, and we're going to include the budget in there. That's going to make for
Long rooms.
A long, a double meeting.
No, I think our first meeting would be.
First meeting, sir.
And I think in February, we'll have to have
Another finance meeting.
Couple more, specific to the budget.
But if we're waiting a month for our next meeting, and we're going to consider, start considering financials. In other words, uh, uh, just you're thinking that, well, Dana won't have anything ready for three weeks anyway.
Yeah.
So that brings us to the second week of February. In that ballpark. Um, but in the month of February, we should have at least, uh, a board meeting with whatever we can handle at that board meeting with, with budget. Then we may have to set another date in February to just work on budgets. Not necessarily, uh, go to March for the budgets. We may need a couple of, you know, a couple of meetings in February to get through some of this, the preliminary stuff. And, uh, then we're gonna have to sit down, uh, once we go through the preliminary stuff, we can understand, we'd like to bring our department heads in for them to go through the budgets again, so if we have any questions of them, uh, we can ask those questions and then, uh, and then at one point, we're gonna have to have a final meeting or a couple of final meetings probably with the, uh, finance committee, uh, to go through. Uh, there's a process, there's, there's gonna be quite a few meetings on budget that, you know, we afford at least, uh, major meetings that probably last more than an hour, a couple hours probably.
Is your concern, Dave, that, um, well, my concern, my concern is that we're trying to shove budget stuff into a board meeting. To me, the budget is the most important thing we're gonna deal with in the next six months over everything else, and and I, I just wanna not feel like we're in a board meeting where we have other things to discuss and, and we're pressed for time and where, I, I don't know, I just.
That's what I was saying, I think, I think if we were to kept on a two-week schedule, we can more or less plan on it and have a less of a load every two weeks. Now, I'm going to be absent in some part of February, and I'm not sure, but if we make a super big meeting in February and I can't make it, then I've lost, uh, a big chunk of it. But you'd have to let us know when you think you're gonna be not here, so we can plan to have you here and avoid the time you're not gonna be here.
We, we eventually got done, you know, when we were done with the process with the finance, and we were in April last year, so we have.
So do we, I mean, this is my first time going through a, the budget process, but do we have a timeline? Do we have a time that it has to be submitted or no?
As long as we have it, you know, we like to have it done, uh.
Well, we wanna go to town meeting in June.
June, and we wanna have the budget ready for the books to be, for printing and all that stuff, so for us, April would be, you know, mid-April, it would be done.
Well, and you're, all right, is it, um, isn't there, there's a public meeting required before the town meeting?
No, no.
Well, what is this in the bylaws that, where is that?
I agree with that.
You do that in, in the board meeting then?
Every board meeting is a public meeting.
So, um, oh, is that it?
Which bylaws? I haven't, is that the, is that the finance?
Public Works, we help to explain the proposed budgets at least one month before the annual town meeting. So that's just part of your regular process, that you go through the whole budget here in the board meeting, and everyone wants to ask the questions, it's not a separate.
No.
Okay.
But, you know, it, it, if it becomes advertised as that, then people will know at that point that that's what it is, or that's what's gonna happen here, so. Because I'm sure that somebody's probably questioned that, so.
Well, when we, when we post our agendas for, for, we work on our budgets, they are in the articles, and when we have a finance committee meetings with the board, it's advertised as such in the agenda. So, people can come here and part, and take part, and they can listen and hear.
I guess what I'm hearing, and, and I'm, I'm not opposed to that, is to have a board meeting, a regular board meeting, is a regular board meeting with board business, and then set up a, a, a separate budget meeting, a couple hours or so.
You mean separate, not necessarily that same night, but a different day?
May not be, may not be the same night.
I mean, we're gonna, I'm, I'm, you know, wanna hear more about when he's taking off here, so.
Yeah, yeah, so we can.
I'd like to know too, I'm not sure.
I'm seeing you, I'll take care of you.
Yes, that's what I'm living. Well, are we, are we gonna choose either Monday, the tenth, or Tuesday, the eleventh of February for a regular board meeting? Can we agree on that one?
How long are we doing?
Well.
So, what are you saying, Dana?
So, have you agreed that we're gonna keep the budget meetings separate from the regular board meetings?
On Tuesday, on Tuesday, the eleventh, there is a unified school meeting.
I would prefer it, 'cause I'm gonna have a lot of really questions that.
Don't.
Oh, you know for me.
On Tuesday, there's a valley unified meeting.
On, on the eleventh, Dana, wanna go to that, yeah. So, how about the tenth?
Let's try the tenth.
Yeah. For a regular board meeting?
The tenth?
Yeah. The tenth for a regular board meeting?
Yeah.
At what, six o'clock?
Yeah.
No budget discussion, just regular business.
Yeah. Weather permits. And then, Dave, get back to us.
I will assume, yeah.
Yeah, and then we can set up, because by then, Dana, you will at, at least have the ability to provide some budgets.
Well, let's, yeah, let's discuss that, and then, if you give, if I have two weeks, and if I can pick, I don't know, maybe five departments, I can be ready, 'cause I wanna be able to provide all the detail and everything, not just numbers, I wanna make, you know, put all that stuff together to be able to answer the questions on the spot. So, if I can pick like five departments, we can probably do that maybe the last week of January. Close the tail end, if you are available.
Or the fourth of February.
And that's with the finance committees?
We'll have, we'll have representation from, from the finance committee.
So, the last week of January, you guys are around there, like.
Tell them when and where.
Like, January twenty-nine, are you available for this?
It's a Wednesday. How early can you get?
Dave, Wednesday? Not good for that, it could be available.
Huh?
Anytime after three.
Or seven forty-eight, more?
One to seven, I can't.
You guys want, you guys want six, six o'clock for a meeting time, or do you want it part earlier so you can get more guys, get out of here?
I would prefer earlier, but I'm not going to. It's a bunch of workshop, it's not like to.
For me, it's important to whatever time I, I'm just gonna make it work, whatever you guys choose.
I would suspect this process may take a little longer, and, in the past, only because there's a lot of new people, so. You know, I'll be quite frank with you, there's gonna be a lot of understanding I need to understand on my part, and I don't intend to just brush through any type of budget, I really wanna scrutinize this, I'm gonna be honest with you. So, we need to afford that time, so we don't feel that we're under the pressure, and I think separating it from, from a regular meeting is, is the best option to go with.
And we've already done that right now, yeah, so.
So, so, in time, as far as the time of day, I mean, are you available?
Anytime after three, we should.
Anytime after three, and I'm available anytime after three also, so.
Okay, can we do like the twenty-ninth, the thirtieth, which is a Wednesday, Thursday, can anybody do that?
What's that?
Twenty-nine or the thirty of.
Twenty-nine to the thirty.
Twenty-ninth, Dave can.
The thirtieth, I can.
Thirtieth, you could?
Yeah.
Yeah, thirtieth, thirtieth works.
Yeah, I, I.
Great, so just pick a time, and I will.
Are we, we're looking at, what, four-thirty? Four-thirty?
I could do four-thirty.
Uh, oh, yeah?
No, I.
Four-thirty, Chris, four-thirty?
Yeah.
January thirtieth?
He's available, the patriots are done, so.
Okay, so four-thirty, that would be.
Okay.
And a regular meeting is gonna be on the tenth of February.
Is it required, Gary, that the budget committee meet prior to that to decide who's gonna be, like, should, do we, should?
That'll be that preliminary meeting we talked about.
So, we can, we can, on the January thirty meeting, the finance committee can have ten minutes to like elect a chair, and do, or do we need to have a meeting prior to that?
Well, I thought you were gonna meet prior to that.
Okay, well, that's what, 'cause January thirty's coming quick, so, right, we're at the, so next week, maybe we'd have to try to get the finance committee together for just at least to.
Talk about the, the organization last week.
So, I'm gonna have to put, post an agenda for that, hold on.
I mean, whatever works, I just wanna make sure we have our ducks in a row.
What, is there a day next week that, that the finance committee, you guys could be available?
Anytime after three.
A day, any day?
Any day.
Okay, so, how about the?
Oh, you do, I can't go backwards on mine. What is that?
Really?
True.
And that's provided that other people can come, I would assume.
Monday's a holiday.
'Cause there's what, four?
Do you do, uh?
In the middle, right?
Do you do Tuesday? Tuesday at, what time?
Anytime after three's fine.
I mean, you guys are just gonna set the floor, set the point who's gonna be the chair, and.
So, maybe it's the other committee members you have to ask, and then tell us, 'cause we're all saying it's okay whatever time, is that correct?
Yeah. That's their business, now we can just.
All you wanna do is the following, uh.
Four citizens large.
The following week, twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven?
It's still before the, still before the budget, uh, first budget. So, suit for the twenty-seventh, that'll give us time to get the notice out to the, to all of the members.
We don't have an exact time yet.
Time, it's up to you, if you wanna do it at four, five, six?
Four, five.
The twenty-seventh, January, at four o'clock.
The organization on the finance committee has seven registered voters, a select person, right? School board member, you'll have to make sure they can, whoever they're going to appoint or continue with. A twin rivers paper, and then four citizens as large, we got two, well, the two others is a Wednesday, right?
I'll have to go back and check, they, they're all.
Perimeter block and the two others.
So, I'll, I'll get the notice out there, I'll reach out.
You're talking probably twenty bucks more. Oh, what's the change?
Buying seats, buying discounted seats.
Does it settle?
Dave doesn't know who's the chair.
No, he's not on it.
But Dave was on.
Yeah, well.
Dave was on as a citizen. Dave was on as a citizen.
Dave, who else was on that, Bush, Deschain, who else, who was the other community rep?
It was Adam, it was you from the mill.
Adam for the mill.
Ray Boyer.
Who?
Ray Boyer.
Ray Boyer's in the one.
He got elected?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll take care of that. Sure, yeah.
And if those are joint meetings, do we have to, in the bylaws says we have to have a secretary and take our own meetings, our own minutes?
Yes.
And the meetings are advertised, let people, public know that there's a meeting.
See who's here, thank you.
All right, is there any other business to take care of tonight? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
Well, by Laurie, turned by Doug, and Matt, you didn't have to flag that two-hour. Thank you, everyone.
Gonna say hi?
I haven't seen you in forever.
Yes, sir.
I know.
You both worked on Main Street.
Yeah, I know, but I haven't seen you since I got back.
You remember this? What are you talking about?
You both work on Main Street, you've seen each other, yeah?
We both, we both worked together on Main Street many years ago. That's what I thought you were talking about.